All right, good morning, everybody. I'll call to order the regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting for this Tuesday, December 11th, 2018. Clearly, we've got a packed agenda. We're going to be here as long as you guys want to be here, okay? But we do have business that we've got to work on, uh, work on and work through. We're going to start this meeting just like we start every one of our meetings by Honor America with Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you in the morning. So appreciated, everybody's interest in, in, we've got three to two big topics today. One that's driving, uh, most of the attendance, but, but two, three major topics. We're going to get through the business portion of our agenda first today. Well, we should get into that fairly quickly. Then we'll move on to the Dotson proposed rezoning, try to deal with that as quickly as we can, and then we'll move on to the public hearing for the three proposed, uh, animal feeding lots. Um, so that's going to be our process today. Our first item on the agenda, as always, is public comment number one. So this is an opportunity for members of the public in every meeting to comment on really anything they want to comment on. What I'm going to ask of you is, if you have comments on either of the topics that we're having a public hearing on, please hold your comments till we get to the public hearing. If anybody would like to address any other topic other than those, those items, please come on up to the microphone right now and, and address us. And seeing no one move to the microphone, we'll go on to consideration of minutes from December 4th.
I move as presented.
Motion in a second, Olson.
Aye.
Chitty.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Personnel actions as listed.
Motion to move as presented.
Second.
Uh, motion in a second, Chitty.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Claims for December 13th.
I move as presented.
Aye.
Uh, okay, so we've got a motion, a second on the claims for December 13th. Olson.
Aye.
Chitty.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Consent agenda, board please pull item number six, which is consideration of the request from the Iowa Department of Natural Resources to award construction contract for acre growth. That's something that I felt like we needed to talk about. I've asked them to come back next week since our agenda is full, so I'd like to pull number six and deal with that next week.
Okay, thank you, motion in a second.
You, how about if you move consideration of the consent agenda?
We agree with the consent agenda minus item six for next week's agenda.
I second.
Motion in a second, Chitty.
Aye.
Uh, Olson.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Consent agenda passes with the removal of item number six. That brings us to public hearing items. Uh, first on our public hearing items is first consideration of ordinance 280, which amends certain boundaries of the official zoning map of Stone County and Resolution 1947, which is our C-2-C, which is our comprehensive plan, future land use map amendment. Uh, we're going to start with planning and development. Jerry and Emily to give us a full report on this, then we're going to hear from the applicant, then we'll open the public hearing. Jerry.
Thank you, Chris. We just want to start by thanking the applicant for their descriptive written application, sharing their vision for the property and the goal to protect the natural resources on the property, and also including the concept development plan that they submitted with the rezoning application. The applicant had meaningful discussions with our staff and the Story County Conservation Board about how the conservation staff, uh, might be involved in the management and ownership of these natural areas or environmentally sensitive areas. And their submitted in the discussions that we had with the applicant, the discussions that we had with the Story County Conservation Staff helped shape the recommendation with the conditions that we bring forward to the board today. Planning and zoning commission did address the rezoning request at the December 5 meeting. They had a lot of good questions, discussion, they listened to the comments from the general public, and, um, however, they were unable to reach a consensus, and so there is no recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission on the site. So our role today is to go through the main points that are identified in the Story County Land Development Regulations, zoning ordinance, and the cornerstone to capstone comprehensive plan for rezoning requests to assist the board in making their decision.
This is a rezoning, our C-2-C Future Land Use Map Amendment. The applicant is Chris Freezer. Uh, the property owner is Robert Dotson of the Dotson Family Trust. Uh, the subject property is located in section seven of Franklin Township, uh, on the south side of 170th Street and the east side of 500th Avenue. The city of Gilbert is within two miles of the proposed, um, rezoning. Uh, the districts we have for this property are the Gilbert Fire Association, Mary Greeley Ambulance, Story County Sheriff, the Gilbert Community School District, Midland Tower Cooperative, and Inziniar Rural Water. So the nature of the request, um, is for a, um, rezoning from the A1 agricultural district to the R1 transitional residential district. The C-2-C Future Land Use Map Amendment, um, proposal is from the agricultural conservation area and the natural resource area to the rural residential area designation. Uh, the subject property is approximately 160 gross acres, four quarter quarters. Uh, the request has been submitted to accommodate a proposed major residential subdivision to be located primarily in the northwest, northeast, and southeast quarter quarters. Um, the applicant has provided a concept drawing that includes 81 development lots for one single family dwelling per lot. So looking at, uh, the vicinity map, we're in the northwestern corner of Franklin Township. Um, the subject property is one and a half miles west of the city of Gilbert. Looking at surrounding land use, the land use is primarily agricultural and large lot residential. Um, the Buck Hills subdivision is a third of a mile to the north, on, on the west side of 500th Avenue in Boone County. Eagle Ridge subdivision is a quarter of a mile, uh, to the south, um, in Story County on the east side of 500th Avenue. Looking at the Squaw Creek floodplain that runs through this property, uh, it runs around the western sides and then also on the southwest quarter quarter, um, and to the south of the subject property. Eagle Ridge subdivision is located directly to the south of this floodplain, uh, so, um, because development is strongly discouraged within the floodplain, um, we might, um, consider Eagle Ridge to be, uh, surrounding to the subject property. There are five single-family dwellings within a quarter mile, uh, and these are located on lots, uh, between 6.88 net acres and 53.4 net acres in size. So the current use of the property, uh, 66 acres is a long-term pasture, and that starts in the northwest corner here and extends, um, down eastward and southern. Uh, the farm area, um, there's currently, um, 25 acres in hay production in the northeast corner, and 19 acres that were in corn production in 2018. The, there is, um, an area that has been seeded, uh, seeded to long-term prairie, two areas, um, one in the northwest corner of the subject property, and then a majority of the southwest quarter quarter. Um, the remainder of the stream, uh, is stream channel, um, and, uh, natural area. This information was provided to us by Fox Engineering. This is the general concept plan submitted by Fox Engineering and the applicant. Um, again, there are 81s, lots, um, in the northwest quarter quarter, the northeast quarter quarter, and the southeast quarter quarter. There's no residential development plan for the floodplain area or the natural areas in the southwest quarter. Looking at the zoning map, this property is zone A1, um, and is completely surrounded by A1 zoning. Eagle Ridge subdivision to the south is zone AR, um, and then further, just slightly further south is the Wood subdivision, which is, uh, zone R1. Again, uh, the subject property is located here with the floodplain to the south and Eagle Ridge subdivision, uh, directly to the south of that. Uh, so the existing, um, zoning on the property is A1 agricultural district. This is for land uses compatible with agriculture, uh, and to protect agricultural land from encroachment of proven land uses. Um, a goal is to preserve rural character by limiting development of most new non-farm dwellings to large lots. Uh, the proposed district, the R1 transitional residential district, is for single-family detached dwellings between a rural and an urban density, um, and part of that is providing special provisions to protect the residential character of the district. Just looking at, um, a few of the highlights from the C-2-C plan, uh, designations, existing designations, agricultural conservation area, so that's, um, conserving agricultural land, encouraging high-value agricultural lands to remain as agriculture, limiting conflicts, um, and promoting the continued health of agriculture. The rural residential designation, um, involves principles such as new development sensitive to the predominantly rural area of the county, um, encouraging clustering of residential sites, providing bunkers to minimize conflicts, um, and mitigating and managing stormwater runoff, erosion control, and wastewater discharge. This is our C-2-C Future Land Use Map, um, designation. As I said, previously, the, uh, subject property is designated as A1 agricultural, uh, where you can see the aerial image. We also have a natural resource, uh, layer, um, that is quite general on this site. It does indicate to us, while not very specific, it does indicate, uh, to us that there are natural resources on the site. Principles for the natural resource area, uh, include mitigating impacts of proposed development, discouraging development, uh, within these areas, considering, um, areas identified as natural resource area for inclusion in the Greenbelt Conservation Zoning District. So due to the generality of the natural resource area map and also discussions that took place at the conceptual review meeting, um, it was requested by Story County Conservation that a, um, field survey be done on the site. Uh, Dr. Thomas Rosberg, uh, from Drake University, um, did this, the survey on October 15th of this year. It was a primary, primarily a late-season plant survey, so, um, really just looking at, um, what was on the site, uh, on that date. In the report, uh, Dr. Rosberg, uh, concludes the following, um, "There is a significant native prairie component on the site. The south and west-facing slopes are the most important locations supporting the prairie remnant populations." And finally, "The full extent of the quality of the prairie remnants cannot be fully determined at this point due to the lateness in the growing season." So here are the, um, locations of the identified species. Uh, they're located primarily on steep slopes, again, on the western, um, sides and the southern slopes of the property. This is just some more detail of the identified species. Um, looking at the oblique imagery, um, again, the natural resources identified are primarily on the southern slopes and then the western slopes. Uh, in general, the subject property is highest in the northeast corner, uh, and then falls to the south coast here. This is, again, where the floodplain is located. So I'm going to move on to site photos. The site photos start, um, on the southwest corner of the site, travel up 500th Avenue, and then east along 170th Street. This is looking northeast from 500th Avenue. Um, these are the slopes, um, with the natural resource areas located on them. Down here is the floodplain. This is looking southeast from 500th Avenue toward the southwest quarter quarter. Um, this photo is looking east from 500th Avenue along 170th Street here. Looking south from 170th Street along 500th Avenue. This is looking southwest, um, along 170th Avenue here. Uh, this is the, the property to the west of the subject property. This photo is looking north from 170th Street along 500th Avenue. And then looking northeast from 500th Avenue, uh, along 170th Street here. This photo is looking southeast from 170th Street at the subject property. Um, looking southeast again from 170th Street. This is looking directly south of the subject property. And again, looking south. This is about, um, in the middle of the, uh, subject property, looking south. Again, this is the row crop area, looking south from 170th Street. And this is the very eastern edge of the property here. This is looking, uh, southwest from 170th Street. This is looking southeast from 170th Street at the Amazement Farmstead to the east. This is looking northeast at the Farmstead to the north. This is looking across 170th Street at the property to the north. And then looking back west from 170th Street toward 500th Avenue. So getting into the, um, standards for approval of the rezoning, uh, the proposed rezoning shall conform to this, uh, cornerstone to capstone comprehensive plan. Uh, the C-2-C plan's zoning compatibility matrix shows that the R1 district is compatible with the rural residential designation, and we'll discuss this, um, more momentarily. The is that the proposed rezoning shall conform to the statement of intent for the proposed district and district requirements. So the R1 district is intended for single-family dwellings, um, with minimum lot sizes of 25,000 square feet. The applicant has requested the R1 district, rather than the AR agricultural residential district, to, in order to provide a greater variety of lot sizes, but also to provide smaller lot sizes to better preserve the environmentally sensitive areas on the site. Um, the proposed use of southwest quarter quarter in the environmentally sensitive areas for open space recreation area and stormwater management is more consistent with the Greenbelt Conservation District than the R1 residential transitional district, uh, because there's no, uh, residential development plan in this area. The applicant has expressed interest in working with Story County Conservation to create a management or ownership agreement, uh, for the environmentally sensitive areas, rather than leaving this to future residents or, um, future homeowners association in order, um, to provide what they feel will be the best protection to the environmentally sensitive areas on the site. Um, it should be noted, though, that, uh, if left in agricultural land use under private, uh, ownership, it would be difficult to enforce any preservation of the environmentally sensitive areas on the site. Planning and development staff recommend, uh, require the applicant to request a rezoning of the southwest quarter quarter and the environmentally sensitive areas to the Greenbelt Conservation District, uh, as part of the subdivision plats submitted, as well as requiring a management and a ownership agreement with Story County Conservation in order to best maintain and preserve the environmentally sensitive areas. C is the proposed rezoning shall be compatible with surrounding land uses and development patterns. Eagle Ridge is a major sub, uh, I'm sorry, Eagle Ridge is a major residential subdivision located one quarter miles to the south of the subject property. Um, this subdivision is zone AR agricultural residential, is one quarter quarter in size and contains 14 lots. Uh, these lots range from 1.1 net acres to 1.71 net acres. Eagle Ridge is, uh, again, located directly on the south side of the floodplain of Squaw Creek. Development is strongly discouraged within the floodplain, and therefore we may consider Eagle Ridge as surrounding to the subject property. Planning and development staff recommended condition limiting the overall density of the proposed rezoning area to no more than 14 lots per quarter quarter. So planning and development staff, uh, do recommend a condition limiting the overall density of the proposed rezoning area to no more than 14 lots per quarter quarter for a total of 56 lots, uh, in order to align with the surrounding character of the area. We would like to point out that, um, in the future, as the area, uh, develops and the land use, the surrounding land use has changed, um, it would be possible for the applicant to come back and request amendment to the zoning, um, to further, to, to increase the density at that time. So standard E references the natural resources on the subject property, um, and requires, um, conditions for the conservation of natural resources on the site. Uh, based on the survey completed by Dr. Rosberg in October, uh, there are remnant prairie species on the site. However, uh, further inventory must be completed to identify additional natural resources on the site. Planning and development staff recommend this identification as a condition of approval. And once identified, um, these areas should be designated as agricultural conservation area and natural resource area on the C-2-C Future Land Use Map. The subject property is not an appropriate site for a traditional large lot subdivision, um, and in order to ensure that the future subdivision plats submitted maintains the, uh, existing conservation design principles as submitted by the applicant, uh, planning and development staff recommend a condition requiring that any proposed subdivision on the site meet the RC Residential Conservation Design overlay district design improvement requirements, uh, which will limit the environmentally, I'm sorry, which will limit development on the environmentally sensitive areas of the site. Uh, this will ensure conservation principles are maintained without adding additional requirements for landscaping, sidewalks, or other infrastructure improvement requirements, um, that are, uh, required in the RC, um, Residential Conservation overlay district. And finally, for the standards of approval for the rezoning request, um, standard E, which is in areas where the petition to rezon the request, um, to rezon requests of change or the A1 agricultural district to the, or the A2 agribusiness district to another district, uh, land scoring 267 or above for the total LISA score as determined by the land evaluation site assessment, as adopted for Story County, shall not be approved. So we can see here that three of the four quarter quarters need the LISA threshold for rezoning requests to be submitted. The southwest quarter quarter does not meet the threshold for the rezoning, for a rezoning request to be approved. Uh, the difference in these LISA scores is really a result of varying average site value, which is a, an average of the consuability rating of the soil on the site. Uh, because the LISA scores consider surrounding zoning and surrounding land use, uh, and then the overall score, uh, if the northwest, northeast, and southeast quarter quarters were rezoned to the R1 transitional residential district, the LISA score of the southwest quarter quarter would, uh, fall below 267 and thus be eligible for a rezoning request. Again, uh, as we discussed before, it is recommended as a condition that the southwest quarter quarter and the environmentally sensitive areas identified on the site are rezoned to the Greenbelt Conservation District. New dwellings are not permitted in the Greenbelt Conservation District, uh, so this rezoning request would, um, prevent development in this, these areas. Moving on to the future land use map amendment standards, uh, the first item is that the extent to which the change would be, uh, is the extent to which the change would be consistent with the comprehensive plan goals and policies. So there are several, um, goals in the C-2-C plan that are consistent with the proposed amendment. Um, I'm going to, this morning, focus on, um, just a few of the land use goals. Land use goal two, um, is to preserve, protect, and plan around the physical characteristics of the land. Planning and development staff are proposing commissions to identify the environmentally sensitive areas and designate them as natural resources. Land use goal three, consider the availability and capacity of local services and infrastructure when determining future land uses. Um, I just want to pull out a few of these items. Uh, there's currently no gas service to this property, however, um, based on discussions with the applicant about the proposed development, a line energy, I'm sorry, a line energy anticipates extending a line west from the city of Gilbert to the subject property. Um, it was communicated by Inziniar Rural Water that the existing system does have capacity to serve a, a residential subdivision at this location. Uh, it does not, however, have the capacity for fire flow or residential irrigation systems unless a line is extended, uh, from the southeast. Uh, special consideration will need to be taken when designing the drainage of the site. Uh, the subject property is located with, with the three drainage district boundaries, um, which need to maintain the drainage, uh, within those, um, boundaries. Standard two looks at whether, um, new information has become available since the comprehensive plan was adopted, uh, that supports reexamining the plan. Uh, the proposed development offers a new opportunity, um, for the identification and conservation of the environmentally sensitive areas on the site. The C-2-C plan includes a proposed trails and greenway map, uh, which, which includes a proposed hard surface trail along 500th Avenue, uh, and 170th Street adjacent to the subject property. The planning, um, of the subject property is a good time to allocate space for a future potential, uh, hard surface trail. Planning and development and Story County Conservation staff recommend a condition of a 20-foot wide easement along the west and north sides of the property to allow for the potential future development of a hard surface trail. Standard three, uh, whether or not the change is needed to allow reasonable, reasonable development of the site. A rural residential designation is necessary for a residential, uh, development on the site. The proposed conditions of the amendment will more clearly, um, locate and identify the natural resource areas on the site, uh, and provide an opportunity for the preservation and, um, maintenance of these areas. Standard four is the relationship of the proposed amendment to this applying demand for the particular land uses within the county and immediate vicinity. Uh, there is a demand for rural residential dwellings in Story County. With a growing population, additional housing will be needed, and the proposed development will provide another, um, type of housing option, smaller lots and then open recreation area. Uh, the proposed conditions will assist in preserving the environmentally sensitive areas on the site. And in order to ensure gradual, uh, land use transitions to, uh, reduce potential incompatibilities with, uh, agricultural use, um, staff recommends a minimum of a 50-foot buffer on the east side of the proposed development. Five is a demonstration that the proposed amendment has merit beyond the interests of the applicant. Um, the proposed amendment, uh, obviously serves the interest of the applicant by allowing residential lots to be planted and sold for single-family dwelling development. Additionally, current and future residents of Story County will benefit from the preserved and maintained environmentally sensitive areas on the site, as well as the preserved open space. The preservation will also provide an open space buffer from the surrounding, um, land uses, provide space for improved stormwater management and erosion control, and foster habitat for the growth of the existing remnant prairie species. Lastly, the proposed development may act as a resource, um, for future developments that are going to use, uh, conservation design principles. Six looks at the possible impacts of the amendment on all specific elements of the comprehensive plan. Again, with the conservation of the natural resources and recreation area, uh, the proposed development provides an increased opportunity for recreation in Story County. An inventory of the site will provide a more accurate representation of the natural resources on the site. In terms of transportation, the applicant will be required to submit a traffic impact analysis as part of the major subdivision application. Further, again, staff is recommending that 20-foot easement along the west and north edges of the proposed subdivision, um, when that application is submitted for the potential future development of a hard surface trail. And lastly, standard seven, um, is consideration of the fiscal impacts of the proposed amendment to Story County. Uh, any fiscal, any potential fiscal impacts will be determined at the time of the submission of a major subdivision plan. Um, we did hold a conceptual review meeting on October 11th of this year. Um, I'm just going to highlight a few of those. Um, I'm just gonna highlight a few of those comments. Um, conservation did, uh, note the twenty-two species of native prairies, um, I'm sorry, twenty-two native prairie species located on the site, um, but that they continue, uh, will continue to gather information, um, and I look forward to working with the applicant to explore the potential, um, environmentally sensitive development on this site. The Story County engineer noted a five-hundred-foot site distance requirement we have in our code, um, in order to keep drainage within the drainage district boundaries, um, and avoid disturbing the tile. It was anticipated that this will add approximately seven hundred vehicle trips per day to Hundred Seventieth Street, um, but the traffic impacts and access locations will be addressed when the subdivision plat is submitted. The new traffic impact analysis and study ordinance will be in effect. Story County Environmental Health, um, had discussions with the applicant about the potential centralized system, um, and what the, um, benefits and, and negatives were for the developer and the homeowners. We sent notice letters to, uh, property owners within a quarter mile of the proposed rezoning, um, into the city of Gilbert on November twenty-seventh, um, in regards to the planning zoning commission meeting and this meeting today. The notice was also published in the three papers designated by the Board of Supervisors on November twenty-seventh. Um, so, we received some public comments prior to the planning and zoning commission meeting. We received, um, a few phone calls and an email just asking for additional information on the rezoning request. Um, a planning and zoning commission member was contacted by the mayor of Gilbert to discuss the proposed project. Uh, that same commission member forwarded comments and questions from an adjacent property owner. Um, these included, um, questions about the drainage district boundaries, the drainage tile preservation, um, and the natural flow of water on the site. This individual had questions about whether or not the Greenbelt Conservation District was applicable to the site, or, um, if the RC design, um, residential conservation design overlay district was applicable. This individual did state that they believe that further studies of the environmentally sensitive areas should be completed, um, and then just asked a general question of is placing eighty houses on such a small area consistent with, um, the rural residential area principles, uh, specifically principle one, which is to ensure that new development is sensitive to the predominantly family. So the comments from the public at the planning and zoning commission meeting, um, included that Iowa's ranked the lowest out of fifty states for the amount of natural landscaping remaining, um, just providing a more, um, reason to preserve what we have. Uh, the conflicts between identifying environmentally sensitive areas of the proposed concept plan, um, were noted. Um, this individual felt that there were some conflicts between where the environmentally sensitive areas are located and the proposed concept plan. Potential, this, this individual also, um, thought that the potential Story County Conservation Management of the environmentally sensitive areas would be a positive thing. The residential subdivision, um, developments have had significant impacts on natural landscapes in other areas. There's concern about how the lease of scores are evaluated and if Story County is really trying to preserve agricultural land through these scores. There was a question about will the natural flow of water on the site be maintained? How does the applicant propose to buffer the impacts of the residential development from the existing livestock and crops in the area? Uh, we talked about buffering the, uh, proposed residential development from the livestock and crops, and this individual turned the question around. On lease of scores, um, another individual indicated that the lease of scores do not represent the productivity of the ground. Um, there are concerns about emergency response, accessing the, um, proposed lots, particularly in the southeast quarter quarter, uh, during large rain events due to the topography of the site. There are concerns about impact on existing cattle operations, specifically the one to the east. Uh, it was noted that Hundred Seventieth Street is a farm-to-market road, um, so there's a lot of agricultural equipment traffic. This individual, uh, also indicated that there is land closer to Ames that has not yet been developed, as well as lots available in the Buck Hill Estate subdivision to the north. Gilbert recently annexed land for residential development. Uh, there will be additional cost to the Gilbert Fire Department, uh, to serve the area, um, and the water will have to be supplied by the city of Gilbert, um, because Xenia indicated that they don't have capacity for fire flow. Um, there are also concerns regarding the increase in traffic through the city of Gilbert, um, and it was noted that this would be an increase in the tax base for the Gilbert Community School District. Here's some comments from the planning and zoning commission. Uh, it was noted that the remnant prairie species on the area, there were remnant prairie species on the area intended for the rezoning. Um, there's a question about what is the impact of the easements and buffers proposed, uh, as conditions on the developable area of the property? How will the three-day drainage districts impact the, the development? Uh, residential development can have negative impact on the adjacent and nearby livestock. Uh, it may be necessary to construct a fence around the entire property to minimize these impacts. Uh, is Eagle Ridge really surrounding the subject property? It's a quarter mile from the very southwest corner of the property. Uh, why is the southwest quarter quarter included in the rezoning request? Since the three quarter quarters are planned for development, why do staff consider all four quarter quarters and the maximum overall density? Um, this is forty-two versus fifty-six lots. And why does the existing ordinance limit the rezoning, um, from, from an A one or A two district with a lease of score greater than two sixty-seven? We do have zoning district that's more restrictive than these, um, so that question was asked. Um, and then why was the RC overlay district not used for the proposed subdivision? Should the RC overlay district be amended? Um, and then it was also asked if there's a maximum lot size in the R one district. Other public comments. Um, on Monday, December tenth, we did receive an email from an adjacent property owner with several questions related to the lease evaluation, and also the meaning, uh, rural versus urban residential density. Staff did respond to these questions via email. So our points to consider. There are negative, I'm sorry, there are native prairie remnants and other natural resources on the site. Uh, the C two C plan discourages development in these areas and proposes the Greenbelt Conservation District as an appropriate zoning district for conserving the natural areas. A management and/or ownership agreement with Story County Conservation would be more effective in preserving, um, the native prairie remnants and other environmentally sensitive areas on the site, then placing sole responsibility on future residents or homeowners association. The development, uh, let's see, sorry. Uh, the proposed development is adjacent to two paved county roads. Uh, since the development is, since development is discouraged within the floodplain, it can be determined that the subject property is surrounding, um, to the existing development at Eagle Ridge. Allowing an overall density of fourteen dwellings per quarter quarter is consistent with the development at Eagle Ridge and the surrounding land use in the area. The R one district will offer smaller lot sizes, offering greater protection to the environmentally sensitive areas and open space on the property. Uh, a traffic impact analysis will be required with the subdivision plat application. Road or traffic improvements will be considered at that time. The C two C comprehensive plan includes a proposed trails and greenway map, which includes, um, a hard surface trail along Avenue and Hundred Seventieth Street, the western and northern boundaries of the subject property. Um, so, planning and development staff made the following recommendation to the, uh, planning and zoning commission. Planning and development staff support the proposed rezoning from the A one agricultural district to the R one transitional residential district and the C two C future land use map designation from the agricultural conservation area and natural resource area to the rural residential area for the northwest quarter, the southwest quarter, I'm sorry, the northwest quarter, the northeast quarter, and the southwest quarter of the subject property. With the following conditions. The overall density of the future subdivision shall be consistent with the density of the Eagle Ridge subdivision located to the south, uh, and that means not to exceed fourteen development lots per quarter quarter in order to match the existing character of the area. Condition two is that the applicant shall collaborate with Story County Conservation to identify and map the locations of the environmentally sensitive areas, including the southwest of the northwest quarter quarter on the subject property, um, including but not those, uh, limited, including but not limited to those, uh, areas identified in condition seven below. Condition three, uh, the applicant shall request a future land use map designation amendment for the environmentally sensitive areas identified in condition two, uh, from the requested rural residential designation to the agricultural conservation designation at the time of the proposed subdivision plat, uh, and rezoning submittal. Uh, the environmentally sensitive areas identified in condition two shall further be designated as natural resource area on the C two C future land use map. Condition four, um, is in order to ensure the long-term protection of the environmentally sensitive areas and the floodplain areas, uh, an application to rezon the southwest quarter quarter, um, and all environmentally sensitive areas identified, uh, through the inventory in condition two, um, shall be submitted for the A one agricultural district and the R one transitional residential district, uh, to the Greenbelt Conservation District. See, a management and/or ownership agreement with Story County Conservation shall be made and submitted at the time of the rezoning, um, in order to best preserve the, um, preserve and maintain the identified environmentally sensitive areas on the site. Condition five, uh, is in accordance with principle four of the rural residential area, C two C, uh, future land use map designation, a buffer of no less than fifty feet shall be maintained between the proposed subdivision development lots and the agricultural land use located to the east. Condition six, um, a twenty-foot wide easement for a future hard surface trail shall be provided on the north and west sides of the proposed subdivision for future trail development, uh, as described in the C two C plan. And finally, condition seven, uh, as a part of the subdivision plat submittal, the development improvement shall meet the requirements, um, of the residential conservation overlay district, um, design and improvement requirements. Uh, this is, um, uh, limiting, um, development on areas such as wetlands, native prairie remnants, uh, places with significant tree cover, uh, areas having, um, slopes greater than fourteen percent, areas that provide habitat for rare, threatened, endangered species, burial sites of Native American mounds, and then drainage ways, um, containing running water during spring runoff or during storm events. So, at the planning and zoning commission meeting on December fifth, um, following discussion, there was a motion, uh, that was made to recommend approval of planning. Staff's recommended, recommended conditions, uh, removing condition one, which is the maximum density condition, um, to the Story County Board of Supervisors. Uh, this motion failed for a lack of a second. Another motion was made to recommend approval of the staff recommendation, um, which include all of the conditions to the Board of Supervisors as, uh, provided above, uh, which I will get to in a second. Alternative number five, um, the vote on this motion was two to three. Um, we do need a majority vote of those present, which would be three of five, um, to recommend approval or denial of the motion. There were no additional motions made by the planning and zoning commission. So here are your alternatives today. Um, you may recommend approval as submitted by the applicant, um, approval as submitted by the applicant with the conditions, denial of the, um, proposal by the applicant. You could, uh, choose to remand the request, um, back to staff and the, um, applicant for further discussions and bring it back to you on a different date, um, or the fifth. Uh, alternative would be number five, which is what planning and development staff recommend, um, which is approval of the rezoning of the, um, northwest quarter quarter, the northeast quarter quarter, and the southeast quarter quarter, um, as well as the future land use map amendment for those areas, um, with the conditions listed above, which were one through seven. Take your.
Very thorough, yeah, very thorough, thank you. Um, yeah, so, questions from the board, I've got just a couple. So, all we're talking about today is the rezoning of this property. That does not imply approval of a plat or anything like that, is that right? Second one is, and Jared, maybe you help me with this one, I have never heard of us establishing density based on a quarter quarter before. Have we ever done that before?
Well, and again, that comes from one of the key criteria of zoning limits, which costs our, if you're gonna request a change in zoning, we need to establish the, what the existing land uses and the development pattern. So that's why we drew from the Eagle Ridge development, which is the closest development.
Sure, but I also heard that the Eagle Ridge development ranges in lot sizes of one-point-one acres to one-point-seven acres, so, in my mind, I'm just kinda calling it one developable lot, kinda per acre of, of the development, and I'm wondering if there wasn't another way to get there, 'cause we've got this range, right, from eighty-one, from the proposal from the developer, to fifty-six, based on fourteen lots per quarter quarter, and I'm just trying to understand how all that works, when I also heard you say that smaller lot sizes in it with rural character would have some appeal and is something that, that we need in our inventory, so, so I'm, it's not true for me if I'm hearing smaller lot sizes, but also fewer lots. Those two don't, don't line up very well, right?
Well, on the smaller lots, the R one zoning district request, which is the twenty-five-thousand square foot.
Oh, which is a half acre, right, roughly, a half acre.
It's nice in this particular case because it helps preserve those environmentally sensitive areas, and the applicant has no intention of developing those areas, so, that's why it makes that request, um, something worthy of support.
Thank you. Other questions, board?
Talking about fire service concerns, we're trying to move a development here in Nevada, and one of the things we're having trouble with, uh, Central Federal Water, is, uh, being both a contributor on a raw water basis and, uh, meeting fire service, that's a question for you there, 'cause you are clearly out of the county.
Yeah, so the Gilbert, um, Fire Department does have, um, tanker trucks, um, to serve the rural areas where they cannot, um, connect to, uh, fire water, uh, fire hydrants. So this is something they're already doing. They wouldn't have any hydrants to connect to anyway in this area, so the fact that there's not enough pressure for fire service, um, may or may not be a concern to you.
On the, uh, lease of scoring, as, on the movement to an R one designation, I get that if you do the three quarter quarters, then that pulls down the, the conservation green belt designation. Isn't, don't we have the ability to lock this in as being something that we have control on, in the sense that the conservation is there because of an agreement as is proposed?
Are you asking that, does it have to be, um, formally rezoned at some point, that green belt part?
Uh, the consumer expressed that the con, uh, planning zoning in the sense that because of the art moving the A one to the R one, that would pull down the, uh, lease of score of the floodplain area and whatnot. And does that not get moved to the side by having the, uh, rebuild designation, the conservation rebuild designation?
So, um, in the code, um, it says that when there's a lease of score higher than two sixty-seven for property, um, rezoning from the A one or A two district to any other district shall not be approved. Um, so, we don't have the, we can't rezon, um, a property with a high lease of score at, to any other district. But if we do it after, uh, as we talk about, if the surrounding land use is changed, um, that will impact the lease of score, um, and that will bring it below two sixty-seven.
And then we bring it in?
And then we. And then we can, someone can submit an application for rezoning at that time.
To rebuild conservation, which helps protect those areas and allows them to do projects with the purpose of that.
Okay, Laura?
Are we leapfrogging here a little bit, based upon how the vision of our own planning and our zoning residential districts are going into the A, in going from, you point out, like Eagle Ridge is only thirteen lots for a quarter. And then all of a sudden, we would be going to a much higher density. And in that leapfrog, would not a consequence be that somebody else would sell one hundred and seventy, sixty acres of farmland, right, this door, say, maybe, and another developer comes in and wants to go to that density? And then staff comes to his back and says, oh, look, the right next door, we've got a higher density. So, isn't that kind of what leapfrogging is, when you start jumping over the natural progression of higher and higher, or lower and lower densities the further you get out, so that all of a sudden, you've got a band of much higher density?
Yeah, the way that we were able to come to the conclusion that the subject property was surrounding the development in Eagle Ridge was, as Emily mentioned, much of this area is south, and including the southwest quarter of this property is in the floodplain. And so, that acts as somewhat of a corridor by which development is not supported or encouraged. There is another quarter-quarter to the south with a single family dwelling on that forty acres, but much of that parcel is in the floodplain. So, just south of that corridor, the floodplain is Eagle Ridge. So, that's how we're able to draw that conclusion that it is around.
So, the, Ricky, instead, you're only considering the rezoning today. But, it's my understanding from some of the discussions that have occurred with the developer, the staff, the developer approached me with some contact, okay, that if there, if there would be a possibility of approving the rezoning, but then not approving later on a preliminary plat down the road, that that may not be advantageous for the developer due to the purchase price, et cetera?
Well, I think, I think that's completely fair, of course, that any, any developer would need to know generally how many lots, not necessarily the configuration of those lots, but how many lots would be approved as part of the purchase price, because this ground's worth a different amount if you can build fifty houses than if you can build eighty houses.
Right, and I, I think if we, the owners here, I, you know, squeeze.
We're going to hear from you, yeah.
Yeah, okay, great, and I'll, you have other questions and so will you.
Any other questions for Jerry or Emily, before we move on to the applicant and the owner of the property, and then we'll open the floor here.
Not at this time.
Good, okay, good job, thanks Emily.
Yeah, thanks.
At this point, let's hear from Mr. Friedrich and Mr. Dotson. And I'm just going to turn it over to you guys to talk to us about what you want to talk to us about, and then I'm sure we'll have questions.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. My name is Robert Dotson, I'm the trustee of the Dotson Family Trust A. That's in a capacity, I hope, entitled to this property, you hear me all right?
Yes.
I want to just a few minutes of the board's time to give you some awareness as to what has prompted our application for this change in zoning at this time. I try to be very brief, but I think they just really be valuable to the board itself. This property was first acquired by McCallum back in nineteen sixty as part of a large rep. As other easels were sold off decades ago. He retained the title of this because of his view that the property was suitable for a very nice development, residential development, and that at some time in the future, that would be the highest and best use to which this property could be put. The other property was most typical of rather sort of format. He passed in two thousand and three, and I assume title as trustee of this trust. The initial beneficiary was my mother, who passed away about four years later. The primary beneficiary now is my older sister, who started developing health issues. And that prompted, in my words, to position this property to make it more suitable for residential development. I gathered information back in two thousand and sixteen about the various conservation reserve programs. And in two thousand and seventeen, we put in bid to enroll what you've been describing as the southwest quarter-quarter, as well as a small tract in the northwest quarter-quarter in the conservation reserve program. The one that I selected is what's called the Palomero Program. It's more expensive, but it yields successful, at least in my experience, a remarkably attractive transitional prairie to what I already considered the, a, 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 a true valley of school offering. You've always never had the opportunity to know him like that, or he was a blue collar guy. He came to Ames in the thirties as a red truck driver. I grew up in a gas station. He always pissed for the little guy. When he dealt in real estate, one of the things that always was in the back of his mind, therefore in the back of mine, was this stuff. Those crew is going to buy these lots. We've already had several questions about lot size. What we haven't touched on is the allocation of the fixed costs of development over the lots. These lots, we hope, are to be sold to families with school-aged children. To do that, anticipating the fixed costs of bringing this development in. If you do eighty lots, you want to stretch it a little bit, seventy to fifty. Then your price point is within the reach of a family with school-aged children. If you cut it back into the fifties at larger lots, many of those people will drop out of the market. You'll be selling these lots to more mature couples, presumably with children beyond school age. That's not what we want. Think about where this is, far like two miles from your local school. We want those kids to learn, we want them to learn.
Isn't that part of the fixed cost what you're charging for them?
Absolutely.
Just want to make that clear.
I can sell more land for less.
You can sell more for less, too, but, and that's not our business, I just want to pull that out.
No, but it's a great segue to the next point that I needed to make for this group. In my opening comments, I talked about, I, in the intervening years, and specifically starting on July thirteenth of this year, prior year, my sister was removed from the home she occupied in Old Mind, and her hometown for a few years. And moved to a care facility in the memory. This trust provides the money to keep her in that neighborhood. The cost of supporting her in her former residence was less than a hood, the cost of every mark to keep her in a memory. Very comparable to Green Hills and the other areas. I have to do something with this property. I really have two choices. Either we develop it, go for the goal that my father had back in the nineteen sixties, or I have to find a way to make that agricultural land under A1 more productive. I suspect that most of the folks here are, are here for the second night on the agenda. It's kind of a no-brainer if I can't develop it. If Mr. Friedrich is to say, no, that's just not enough lots, this isn't the only word. Then I have a choice of one that has to explore and answer the agricultural use. There's a one-word answer to that, life's house, whether it's hogs, cattle, or home. You have a whole lot of choices. I would really prefer to bring in a developer. I don't know if any of you have gone out and looked at this. Did you walk out and you could pasture up to the top of the hill?
I would not do that, if that's a mobility issue, Chris, that's a question, they didn't figure the guy's idea out.
Well, generally, did. What a wonderful place to build a house. The proposal that Mr. Friedrich was putting together fits the right price point. If it would provide those houses, then it may be worth it. Do you see how that new house gives the older, rather than the old man? It's a no-brainer. I have to move. Oh, this is an English school, okay, she's my sister, who has a life expectancy fifteen, twenty years. By she dies, the, 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 the price of this is twenty-four. That's the timing, right? I'm out of time, and trust me, I have to do the best I can for the foundation.
Mr. Dotson, thank you very much. Kurt?
Well said, Bob, thank you. My name is Kurt Friedrich with Friedrich Real Estate. We're pleased to bring this proposal forward today. I want to thank also Emily and Jerry for the diligence in their reporting. They spent a great deal of time with us, exploring the viability of residential development at the, at this location, and the potential challenges. And I can say that there's clearly been a paradigm shift in the thinking as we've gone through the due diligence process. We have engaged several members of staff, Mike Cox and Dr. Tom Rosberg, who were mentioned earlier. We together went out to the property and surveyed the property. And they took an unnatural resources inventory of the property that helped us arrive at the design that we are proposing today. As it's been stated, today is really just about a comprehensive plan for change and a rezoning. It is not about the preliminary plat. But, in view of the importance to us of lot count and layout, it was critical that we bring forward sooner than we normally would, a concept plan, so that you all would not be surprised when, when we do come forward with a preliminary plat of what we might be desiring to see happen here. The plat before you does represent eighty lots. And we're excited to bring this forward. We're just finishing up Cameron Estates in the county, which is another conservation subdivision. We've, we've been a part of more conservation subdivisions than any other developer in our area. It's been very successful, and we only have ten lots remaining in Cameron Estates. So, we know the need is there, and we need to provide a new, a new neighborhood for people to move who want to live in the county. It was said in the Planning and Zoning Commission that it would be desirable for everyone to live in the city. And that's just not reality. We need to provide different kinds of housing solutions for families based on their wants and their needs. There certainly are advantages to living in a city, in terms of logistics and location, to services, schools, shopping, et cetera. But, there are advantages, as, as you know, to living in the county as well. Advantages like quiet and, and nice, open spaces and room to, to move out and, and build something that is a little different than what you could in the city. In fact, in Ames, we are restricted with our zoning code to building approximately three point seven five housing units per acre, which equates to a ten thousand square foot lot. What we are proposing here under the R1 zoning is something that's two and a half times what could be achieved in the city of Ames. And that's certainly something that people desire, is a little more room. And there's been important, important distinction there between what we are offering. And further, with the density that we are, are asking for, eighty lots, and frankly, eighty lots over a hundred and sixty acres is extremely low density overall. And that's how he look at the project, is a hundred and sixty acres of property. But, what we're trying to do, and Bob had alluded to this, is not deliver another subdivision of large lots that are priced out of reach for the majority of households. We are trying to create a subdivision that is within reach of the majority of households who are looking to move up in Story County to new housing, and provide a more attractive price point. Eagle Ridge has been mentioned, Eagle Ridge, the average lot price is between one hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. We, it's a great subdivision, but again, it's, it's out of reach for most, and it's completely built out. And the average home price for the assessors is eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in Eagle Ridge. While I imagine we will have some homes that may approach that number, the majority of homes will, we are not seeking to duplicate that. We want something, again, that is more in reach of the majority of households. An important distinction. The second critical piece of this development, besides providing important housing, which by the way, will, will provide an unlocking of existing inventory of homes, a really important progression that will open up some entry-level housing for people in Story County. Second critical piece is conservation. And most of you have driven by the property, and Bob talked about highest and best use. What is the highest and best use for this property? It is rolling, it has steep slopes, and yes, we have discovered with the help of Mike and Tom Rosberg, some prairie remnants. And there are drainage ways that are eroding. And quite frankly, is my belief, and I hope that you will conclude the same thing, is that through a well-laid-out development like we are proposing, you can provide much-needed housing, and you can better protect the environment through conservation by setting aside the land, which is what we would be doing. We will be setting aside of the hundred and sixty acres, approximately ninety acres. Fifty-six percent of this property can be set aside in perpetuity for the purpose of conservation. In the city of Ames, we've done the first, the first conservation subdivision under the city's new conservation subdivision ordinance. The main proponent of the conservation subdivision in Ames is that you must set aside twenty-five percent of the land in outlots or conservation use. We're more than doubled that with this proposal. And, and finally, we've had some side conversations with, with others about concern over wastewater. And, and I'll conclude my comments, and then, and then we'll make ourselves available for questions. But, in these areas, we have, we But in these areas, we have looked at and designed around the areas that Dr. Rosberg and Mike have identified as desirable for preservation, restoration. And that's what you see here reflected. There is, I think, maybe a heightened level of concern over the lots that are located in the northwest quarter-quarter. And based on my discussions, I think, we feel that we would be willing to sacrifice some of the home sites in that area, peel it back a little so that we're a little further away from some of those identified prairie remnants. And further, related to wastewater, we would be capable of, in areas where there are grouping of lots of, say, four to six lots, we could still have individualized wastewater systems, but a common collection line that would then take that affluent to a distribution field, a single distribution field further away from these areas. And as I understand it, and I'm not a prairie expert, Mike is more versed on this, and I know Dr. Rosberg more versed than all of us. But I know that it is desirable to keep the land where the prairie remnant is located in a drier state, not to saturate it, that that is counter to the restorative ability of the prairie. And in view of that, we would be open to utilizing combined systems, if you will. And certainly can do that and create a drainage field to release the water, which by the way, with the use of our Advantech systems that we are advocating for the lots, the affluent is pure when it comes out of the Advantech system. And then we will just be distributing the water through the distribution lines. But we need to get it to a single point, and we can do that. And I think achieve the goals that we have, which are housing and conservation. And by the way, we're planning a lot of trails throughout the development for the enjoyment and recreation of our residents and folks of Story County. So we think it's a great, in closing, would agree with the recommendation of staff, with the exception of the fifty-six lot count. I really would like to know, I need to know, an approximate lot count of what you could support to allow us to know whether or not this is an economically viable project moving forward. So thank you very much.
And thank you, Kurt, Mr. Johnson. So you indicated that there in the northwest corner, maybe there's a little room to work. So I'm hearing maybe it's not eighty-one lots. The second thing I heard was that you're talking about the total developable ground in the seventy-acre range. Not that if you're a half acre, you're not developing all of that seventy acres, but it's seventy acres that you'd like to work on developing. And so I'm just wondering, as you look for a number, is it reasonable to look at, if I go back to Eagle Ridge and even across the street in Boone County, and the average is just over an acre per home site, is it possible, say, there's seventy developable acres there, so no more than seventy one per developable acre lots? Is that a workable number to you to make it feasible?
It's not ideal, but it certainly gets us closer to where we would need to be. And I would say we would be viable at that point. Mike Cox and I did visit a little bit about this potential reduction in lots in that northwest quarter-quarter. And maybe Mike can speak to this too. But he had mentioned that potentially, that in view of eliminating lots in that northwest quarter-quarter, essentially those two cul-de-sacs would be pulled back and/or eliminated. And then providing a different way of treating wastewater like we discussed. But that in the southwest, or excuse me, southeast quarter-quarter, that really, there is less desirable, if you will, prairie located in that area, and that potentially some lots could be added back in at that location. Further, I will say, just, we did a lot of research leading up to today. We talked with Gilbert Fire, we talked with the trustees, we talked with the members of the school board of Gilbert. Really no red flags. And also spoke with, tried to reach out to neighbors as much as possible. And obviously, we don't see eye to eye with everyone, but we're just trying to be a good neighbor and do our typical outreach. There were some folks to the south of us that sit on a forty-five acre lot that is basically landlot. And so we are looking at already eliminating, I think it's lot eighty, shown on the plat at the south end, and providing an access point to continue the road to the south to pick up and provide a nice paved access for our neighbors to the south. Additionally, to the north, and I can't make out the, my eyes have failed me here, but towards the north end of the project, and I think, is that lot twenty-five? It's sort of a trapezoidal lot there at the corner. Southeast corner of the intersection of those two roads in the northwest quarter-quarter. That lot also, I think, we will eliminate and provides us a small neighborhood part for the benefit of.
Thank you. Questions for Kurt or Mr. Johnson?
I've listened to a lot of presentations, but I want to tell you, the timeliness of this, especially could not have been better for the audience that we have here. You were plainly spoken, and it was very informative and easy to follow. Mr. Johnson, you have my sympathies in regards to the family dynamic you have pointing out in front of you. I have two questions for you. Had your sister's circumstances not been what they were, would this property even be available for development?
Probably not.
My second question is, so as I plainly have heard it, and I suspect the choices are stark, it is either homes or a K home. Thank you.
I have a question. You said it would be available under control of the county if you need to. Does that mean you'd deed it over to us or?
We would certainly consider that, Laura. So what we're looking at doing is not, and I don't think that this would be good from the disheirer's standpoint for us to, or frankly, for the county to turn over all money to us. I don't think that would not be a feasible thing for the county, frankly. What we typically don't have done, for example, at Corey Estates in Ames, is the majority of the green spaces that we are establishing that will be established as outlots. And again, in perpetuity, they will be outlots. They will not be buildable outlots. But outlots that are set aside in these strategic locations where there are waterways and there are existing prairie plant remnants that we want to preserve. Some of those outlots, actually, the majority of the outlots that are adjacent to the residential areas, primarily in the southeast, the northeast, and then toward the north half of the northwest quarter-quarter, those will be under the care and ownership likely of the HOA. And paid through association dues into that HOA to provide a mechanism, management, and maintenance system for those outlots. The area to the south and west is an area that potentially we could see, if we're all in agreeance, potentially see deed that over to the county as a dedicated conservation area. It could serve even as a part for the county.
And I'm sorry that line has put your down.
Okay, other questions before we open the public hearing?
None.
Okay. So at this time, I will ask John Johnson, who has indicated interest in addressing us today, to come to the microphone. Sure, absolutely. Mr. Johnson, start by introducing yourself and your address, please.
Certainly. My name is John Johnson. My current, my personal address is thirty-seven oh seven, three four five, which is in North Bridge Heights addition. But my brother and I own the family farm directly across from this property. And my brother lives on that residence. He was born and raised there. So that's the perspective I'm getting from today. If you don't mind, I'd like to take a few minutes to just discuss some items that came up in the planning and development report. And then refer maybe to some of the major aspects of the C two C plan and how they may be applicable in this situation. So the first item I'd like to discuss would be the LISA scores. And as has already been stated, it's ordinance number two oh eight, that any land with a LISA score greater than two sixty-seven is not open for rezoning. Then I would look at the agricultural conservative area principles that are stated in the C two C plan. And the overarching number one principle is to conserve agricultural land as well as agricultural practices is a fundamental principle of Story County. And it would be my hope that you keep that principle in mind as we discuss this. Planning and Development Report has already outlined the LISA scores as three of the four quarter quarters being below the two sixty-seven threshold. I did contact Mr. Moore to ask if I could have the manner or the algorithm by which LISA scores were calculated. And I was told there is no algorithm, and I received no information as far as how these scores are derived. So I feel as though there's still something I don't understand. I also asked if a third party could conduct an LISA evaluation of this property. And I was told no. Then I asked, are the computations strictly objective? And he said, there is, his response was that it is a little subjective input. I'd like to specifically look at the northeast quarter-quarter then. And as noted, the LISA score there is two sixty-six. So looking at that number, that's less than a third of one percent less than the two sixty-seven required to be the threshold when you consider maximum score for the enters or whatever it is that's obtainable. Since there's some subjective input into this LISA evaluation, I guess I would think a two sixty-six score is not controversial at least. And I guess, I realize there are a few rules set on how these activities are conducted or how the computations are made. But I guess, the other night at the Planning and Development, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, Mr. Friedrich made a comment that this is your property. That's one thing we can totally agree on. It is your property. I will argue that one. But I do think that there is some merit to consider developing LISA scores for the land based on the current land use. So if we were to look at, say, just the row crop ground in the east quarter-quarter, the south, excuse me, I have to do the mental generations to make sure I'm saying the right thing. The southeast quarter-quarter, I'm fairly confident that those LISA scores on the ground intended for row crop production would be created at two sixty-seven. I guess another question I would have is, we're looking at sixty-six acres of grazing land that has virtually no tree cover. It's capable of supporting cow for every two acres. That stocking density would be unprecedented in our area for timber patch. Stocking density in those type of pasture situations would be more like five acres. So you're not talking about unproductive ground. The ground may not be suited for row crop production, but we're not looking at ground that is unproductive for livestock production. And since the overarching principle does say concerning, excuse me, I refer back to make sure I state that right, agricultural practices. I think that opens a window to not just row crop and not just CS off, but for animal livestock.
Which is what I think we heard Mr. Johnson say, if I'm not mistaken.
I agree.
And could I ask just a question?
Sure.
Okay, so you were saying it would be like five cattle per acre?
On, if you're going to look at comparable timber patch, it would be five acres per cow.
Okay, but you're talking about the confined animal feeding operation. To me, I'm getting the impression you're talking about grazing.
Well, that's what's currently, I'm talking about the current land use, and that's what it is, is grazing. And what I'm trying to tell you, this also is that this is a highly productive grazing ground. It's capable of supporting one cow for every two acres. And so I'm saying comparable, we're not looking at apples fat, is what I'm trying to say. As far as grazing, now, this is highly productive grazing ground.
Thank you.
So again, I would say that maybe, since we all agree this is a unique property, maybe a unique way of evaluating around these LISA scores possible plan. Next one I'd like to look at is the analysis of the standards for approval from the Planning and Development Staff Report.
Mr. Johnson, before we leave the LISA issue, can I ask Jerry to tell us who was on the wall in scoring the LISA score from his office?
Just walk us through LISA, one oh one.
Yeah, one oh one, one hundred.
With regard to the number, anytime we, first of all, the planning staff does the review, there's like eleven questions that we answer. What is the average site value? What's the percentage of area in agriculture within one mile of a site? Land in agriculture adjacent to the site? What's the adjacent zoning? Agricultural support systems and services? What's the land use compatibility for the area? The distance to urban-built up areas? Compatibility of site for agricultural use? Distance to a municipal water system? Distance to sanitary sewer system, again, within the city or an incorporated area? And then the availability of municipal public transit? With regard to numbering, anytime administratively, anytime we have a number that's close to two sixty-seven, we always have another planner do it, and they don't talk about what number is generated. And so in this case, they both obtained the same number.
Thank you, thank you.
May I add something? In the case of this.
Get to the microphone, we've got to.
In the case of the northeast quarter-quarter, the only points that were deducted from the overall score had to do with proximity to the city of Gilbert. Because it is within two miles, there was one point removed for that. The reason, and what staff doesn't have control, is what has been designated as the average site value. And that's what brings the goal of two sixty-six. So in terms of subjectivity on this particular one, there wasn't really any at all.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Mark, is that answered for you?
Yes, it gets me there.
Okay. Good, Mr. Johnson.
I'd like to move on to the analysis of the zoning standards, and specifically to look at, C, the proposed rezoning shall be compatible with surrounding land uses and development patterns. And we've already heard the narrative that they said this is going to be similar to Eagle Ridge, four key houses before the quarter. And we also heard that it would be similar to Black Hills in Boone County. After initially reading this report and hearing this, I thought, well, we're only going to be looking at rezoning three quarter quarters. well, we're only going to be looking at rezoning three quarter quarters here. So, therefore, my assumption was then three quarter quarters would mean that we would be looking at forty-two lots. So, in the meeting the other night, I kept hearing this number fifty-six come up. And so, I did raise the question, you know, the math I go to said three times four is forty-two. How do you come up with this number? And I was told that all four quarter quarters need to be considered. So, as I consider that, let me suggest, for the sake of argument, let's do the same type of fuzzy math with the southwest quarter of section, or section seven of Franklin County. The quarter that would include Eagle Ridge. So, if we can consider all four quarter quarters of that, there would be a total of sixteen houses in that quarter quarter. And when I divide sixteen by four, I come up with four. That's the housing density. So, I think it's all a matter of semantics, but I think we're stretching it here a bit in saying that this density is exactly the same as Eagle Ridge. And it's not even comparable to Buck Hills. I mean, at the end of my presentation, you're going to see a couple of pictures that show a blue worldview of Buck Hills versus, if you could transpose this map on this section seven Franklin County. I think it would be incredibly dense compared to any of the divisions that are going on in our area right now. I guess the other thing that I would mention, and I know you're already well aware of this, that Eagle Ridge was designated an agricultural residential rezoning. And this is contrary to what Mr. Friedrich has requested, our one transitional residential. The other thing that I would mention is that, going back to land use, when we considered when Eagle Ridge was approved, a rezoned agricultural residential, that was an abandoned timber pasture. We're not looking at abandoned timber pasture here. We're looking at, if you remember the pictures, of cows and calves grazing on this current grassland. And we talked a lot about emotional things and aesthetic duty. Well, I think one of the things that we're losing this very quickly, maybe the aesthetic duty, we've seen cows and calves out on grassland. It's a dying thing in this county. And I guess I think there has to be some appreciation for that also. The next thing I would appreciate reviewing would be the comments from the conceptual minor agency review teams. Specifically, I'd like to look at the Story County Engineers' comments. And I'm going to look at three of them specifically. One was keep the drainage within drainage district boundaries. Three, avoid disturbing or building over district tiles. Four, if this will add over, seven hundred plus or minus cars in this operating on one hundred and seventieth street. The other night at the planning and development and zoning commission meeting, Mr. Leo gave a voice solution for the drainage issues. And as you look at the current projected division, the eastern boundary has a road running along the entire eastern boundary. If you also notice, there's two inch of waterways that flow through there. And Mr. Leo tried to assure us that they would have adequate culvers to accommodate the water. I guess I have my doubts that the rig deal would develop a coughing big enough to accommodate a sudden torrential rain, which leaves us with two options. One, the road would be graded high enough that we're going to create a dam. It's going to backwater up into the surrounding farmland. And it has the potential for crop damage that is over and above what would occur if we left such a trench rain. Or, we're just going to be graded low enough that the thirty-four houses at the back of that subdivision are going to be cut off from access to one hundred and seventieth street by floodwaters, which means marriage is not going to be in the name of the citizens. You're not going to be doing that. People are kids that have to go to school. The other comment I think is fairly obvious standing right here. We've got a busy farming market. There are a lot of tractors and wagons moving up and down that road to tell us. And not just during harvest season. There are people hauling corn from stored grain on-site storage down and down that road. They're approaching all the time. Seven hundred cars are going to create an obvious additional traffic. Those are the farm vehicles on the road. Now, I'd like to turn to some comments from the Story County Planning and Development Department. Specifically to look at their point four. An agricultural residential zoning designation request is consistently going a quarter mile south of the property with lot sizes in Buck Hills and consistent with lot sizes in the Buck Hills subdivision. I won't dwell on this, but we've already looked at the fuzzy math. I mean, the report says fourteen houses per quarter quarter. When I suddenly have, with our plans, fourteen houses per quarter quarter equals nineteen houses per quarter quarter, because if you divide three and a fifty-six, you come up with basically nineteen. You're talking about the revenue fifty-six houses, but it's only going to be on three quarter quarters. So, we're looking at a density of nineteen houses per quarter quarter, which already is inconsistent with the data, which is fourteen houses per quarter quarter. If you want to go to Mr. Friedrich's proposal, we're looking at twenty-seven houses per quarter quarter. I don't think anyone in the rural area is looking at living in an urban setting, which this density would suggest to me. And I also would like to say that the planning and zoning development team and our staff did really, in their suggestion here, say that the consistent thing between it and Buck Hills would be a rezoning to agricultural residential, not to transitional hardware. The next point I'd like to make would be on point seven. The C two C future land use map designation of this property are agricultural conservative area and natural resource area. Agriculture conservation aims to conserve agricultural land, direct future non-agricultural development towards the designated urban expansion, rural residential, rural village, and commercial industrial areas. I guess what I'd like to say here is, I don't really understand why each zone was developed, only to allow the developers to aim to move outside that fringe zone and start to develop urban density and developments. I would certainly hope that we could maintain agriculture area as an agricultural setting. My wife and I went on the Story County assessor's site and looked at the Beacon maps. And we decided to define an area with one hundred and seventieth street being the north boundary, the county line road being the west boundary. The east boundary was five hundred and thirtieth avenue, which is the road running directly south from the Gilbert High School. And the south boundary was approximately a half mile south of Cameron's Road. And we just went through, and I'm sure we didn't get everything correct as far as, my assumption would be, we probably missed some properties. But we clicked on each individual property. We put them in a spreadsheet, and it just came up with how many acres in that approximately nine square miles is under the control currently of land developers? And it's over a thousand acres. That's a section and a half of that nine square. They're currently under the control of land developers. The next thing, this is a personal pet peeve, and why I suppose would be item fourteen. Maximum fifteen percent of naturally occurring resources on the property may be removed for earth grading, roadway construction, building site credits, or related construction activities. As I mentioned, I live in Norafreeh Heights. And I have observed what goes on in some of the developments that are occurring in our area. And the first thing that's going to happen is the developer's going to come out and the earth movers scrape all the black ground up in a little time. And they're going to construct the roads, put in the necessary infrastructure, and they're going to start building their houses. And when they come back to regrade around those houses, there's going to be about three inches, or tots, of that remaining ground. And what you're going to end up with is a yard that has minimal moisture retention capability. A yard that after four or five days of hot weather in the summer, even potentially, and four or five days after it, previous inch rain, they're going to be irrigated, which you want to keep creating a lot. My question would be, if they can only reduce fifteen percent of the natural resources, who releases this? And I'm just going to make a very conservative estimate in terms of minimum of two feet of topsoil on that ground for everyone, including the pasture. So, that would suggest to me, if we're only going to remove fifteen percent, that they should be able to put approximately twenty inches back on the ground and around those houses. And my experience has been in South Hills.
Mr. Johnson, can we get to the end? I so appreciate what you're talking about, but we're really getting off into the weeds for a rezoning request. We've got a huge day ahead of us, and I'm going to look at the next one. I'd just like us to get to the end. Okay.
The question about plans to buffer the subdivision from existing land agriculture in the area. I really would like to see that reversed. And they've already talked about the claim to have this development be an area for young children. I guess my question would be, how do they intend to control pets? Do you have curiosity to get into a cattle yard? How about curious kids that want to get into a cattle yard? Who's going to control if someone's setting on fireworks? Cattle are very subject to certain noises. Is there going to be a permanent, cattle, I guess, put around this residential development? And are there going to be cattle gates in each access to one hundred and seventieth? By that, I mean, aggregate cattle gates, cattle are not going to cross into that. If they should happen, maybe not. Finally, just according to the statistics from the planning and development staff on the existing land use in the area, ninety-four and a half percent is agricultural. And five point five, five and a half percent is residential. So, again, I would ask if putting eighty houses on the site is consistent with the order, so, the capstone documents? And if it's consistent with the principle of maintaining the rural character of the area? And again, as I mentioned through the review, unfortunately, no one else could see this, but I do have two pictures at the end of my presentation that do show section one of Jackson County in Boone County, meaning Buck Hills estate, and section seven in Franklin County. The current ownership of that image.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, thank you very much. And next I have Rory Riley, who would like to address us. Rory, start by introducing yourself, and I would ask you to be as brief as possible.
I will try and be.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Rory Riley. I live at the property at the northeast quarter, quarter, on the very east side of it. I've lived here since nineteen eighty-six. I've farmed the property for Bob thousand for twenty-five years. So, I'm kind of in a tough spot here myself. I'm on the opposite side of Bob. Bob's been a very fair and responsible of a landlord as a guy with everyone. So, it's very hard for me to sit up here and say what I'm going to say. I am, my family is in the same type of situation as Bob's family is. Not with the health problems, but I'm the youngest of nine. We have a property in North Dakota, one hundred and sixty acres. We're getting ready to the pointers, belt must cross the road, quarter mile north. Is that, you know, we're thinking about selling. My sister's sadly three, she wants her money. So, is the time now to try and do the same thing with our property? I don't know. But just putting it up for sale doesn't make it the reason to develop, to me. You know, for whatever reason, and I feel sorry for Bob and his family, you know, the rest of us that don't have that situation, if we run out of money, or they run out of money, the state takes care of that. We're sorry for this, it's a bad situation. As far as points of why I'm against it, the farm is very productive as it stands right now. I just kind of went through some quick numbers. Right now, the row crop is from zero to forty-five dollars an acre of profit at today's prices and yields that we had this year. The farmland, or the pasture land is between a hundred and twenty-five and a hundred and fifty dollars of return per acre. Granted, there's less acres of pasture, so it pays, you know. But I make my living, these days, off the cattle on the row crop. And I have fifty-five cows right next to that property. I have another pasture in Boone County, so it's not going to completely put me out of business. But I can't consciously have my, I always caddem there at home, all my cows, because you've got to be there when it's caddem time. And I learned something last year about cattle that I didn't know until I was fifty-seven and over fifty-eight. That I've been often asked, you know, how come coyotes never get into my calves? Well, and I even cab out on the pasture, there's a late one, one or two a year, and I never lose one to a coyote. And I didn't know last year till what happened. I knew cattle could communicate. You call them, they tell all the rest of them they all come around. But the calves like to sleep around the outside of that lot. I have electric fence. I've got a very good track record of keeping my cattle, so they're not going to have to worry about my cattle getting over there. They said they got a fifty-foot bucket on. That's fine. Around the outside of my pen, I have, or the inside, I have a foot and a half electric fence. Naturally, calves like to lay, because the cows don't step on it. It's dry in the spring, keeps cows from reaching through the fence. One of the calves was sleeping there, got up on the wrong side of the fence, which occasionally happens. But on the side to the development, I have glowen wire, which doesn't happen, but it happened on the south side. And I'll try to make this short, but what happened was, I got on the other side of the fence, I laid the calf down like I always do, slid him back onto the barbed wire. He gets up and gets into the electric fence. And I had never seen this before. I'd never heard my dad talk about it, he raised cattle. But that calf must have had a different cry when he thought he was a ser-. Every time he got shocked by that electric fence, I didn't have one cow on me like normally comes, or maybe the sympathetic cow. I had the whole damn herd on me, and I was actually scared. So, and this isn't too far-fetched, okay? Consciously, I couldn't have my cows there. Let's say there's some calves laying out there, and the cows are overeating or are up in the barns drinking water. And some curious, curious kids come over there, and either A, they want to pet the new little calf that's a day old that you can walk right up on, or B, I dare you go over there and pet that calf. Well, that calf gets up, he gets in that electric fence, and now he's, these kids have three cows, or fifty-five cows on them, and you've got three children in there, you're going to have a catastrophe on your hands. So, that's why I can't consciously raise cattle at that farm's dead. If this proposal goes through and they start to put the cows through there. I feel bad for Bob, and I wanted to get the most money out of his property for his family, just as I want for my family when the day comes. But I just, I can't be for it with that, and the traffic on the road, the problems we're having. I quit running my flashers on my tractors during the day. It's people from town, they do not pay attention. If your flashers are on all the time, you turn on your turn signal. I've almost got hit three times in the last year, where if I don't watch out for them, they're going to hit me, because I got my turn signal on. So, what I've done now is I don't turn my flashers on during the day. I use the turn signal only. It has helped, but it's not a cure-all, so.
Rory, thank you. John covered, Johnson covered some of the other points I had. Okay, question for Boris.
So, you are grazing your cattle, and the other, it sounds like alternative that Mr. Johnson is looking at right now is to put it upon and feed that horse. Do you have any thoughts about that?
You're welcome, I'd be horrible to go.
Thank you. Next I have Terry Gallahan. Terry, how are you this morning?
I'm well, how are you, Rick?
Good.
I'm Terry Gallahan, I live in the town of Gilbert. I'm speaking for me, not necessarily city council. I'm not happy about the threat of a hog compartment lot out there, but that's something way down the road if it happens, you know, that I'd be in another meeting like this. One thing, one thing I thought about was the invasive plants. And I think about all of those, all of those homes and all of their lawns that are treated, and where that runoff goes. Does it go into those areas, all those environmental areas? You know, there's a lot of invasive things, there's pet waste, there's going to be grass clippings dumped in those sensitive areas. One big point for me is the two-inch lane going into their water main. It's not big enough for fire control. We saw from the presentation that it's Gilbert Township Fire Agency that controls that, which means the water has to be hauled. Water that has to be hauled is coming from, it's going to come from our water tower. I worry about that. I do worry about, and again, this is a development issue. It's not a zoning issue. I do worry about that quarter mile on the deadly road. John talked about rain. What if there's a tornado? And it takes out right in the middle of that road? Those people are stuck there. They can't get in or they can't get out, because it's a deadly road. So that's kind of a big issue with that. Housing, I want to talk about the housing shortage. We have a housing shortage in Gilbert. I do want to develop that, Marty. There, we talked about it at the last meeting. We just recently annexed almost eighty acres in the town of Gilbert. Want the kids to go to Gilbert School? Come to Gilbert. Pay, help us pay for our water bill at Gilbert. I know that the school gets taxes when you're in the school district, but the town doesn't. And if there's seventy cars driving on that road, a lot of them are going to come into Gilbert, and they're going to, that's rent here on our roads. Parents bringing kids to school, parents going to kids' to school functions. And we get no taxes from that, because it's a town from the town. So I'd rather, if we want more kids to go to the school, I'd rather they develop or they guide in that development, in that new, almost eighty acre development. We also have other land in town, I'm not sure what it is, maybe twenty acres, that has not been, been, been developed on the west side of town. It's another place to look. So I, there is land available. It doesn't have to take up the grazing land, the important grazing land. I guess that's it. That's all I had to say. I'm with John too on this kind of, this fourteen houses per quarter, quarter. It's like, well, we're only going to develop three quarter quarters, but let's just take these fourteen from the other quarter, quarter and cram them up in the other three. I don't quite get that, but that's really, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Fromm, go Kathy Fromm.
Well, I do live in a camp. I live between developments. And I spend a lot of time talking to developers, and I consider Kurt over here a friend. And we've known the Rileys for years very well. We have been stewards of the forty-five acres we own. I feel like this is fighting the last war, and I'll say why. Have you all heard of climate change? What climate change means is that we have to have density and population, because the major issue is transportation. It is not unknown now that there are these problems. Why do you think the French people who are rural are protesting every weekend in France? That is because the French government raised the fuel tax and a carter tax, and it falls on rural people, because they have to drive more. This is a rural development. I can't say, I'm not saying I'm for or against it. I'm trying to say that in the future, we face these problems. And that includes, are we going to have buses, Ames buses going out to all these areas for people? We cannot pay for the tax that they're going to have to pay. We have increased the growth tax in California, which was approved by the population in a referendum. But the point is, we face these issues, and we can't just decide that rural life is very nice. Now, I do live there. It's quieter. My husband hunts, and I know all of the issues. And they have done a very good job of managing the environmental issues. It seems to me like you couldn't ask for more. But the question is whether we can have rural development as rural as this really is. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. So that brings me to the end of people who have requested to speak. Is there anyone else who would like to address this topic as part of the public hearing? Yeah, Linda, go, and then Cindy will come to you.
Thank you, and I apologize for not signing up earlier. I would simply like to read a couple of things from the zoning ordinance. But first to say that I served on the planning and zoning commission for three years, until last week I resigned because I was going to another capacity. We had trained very early in that time. Thank you, Jerry, for putting that together and setting that up. And what I remember, and this is a chapter verse, but what I remember the trainer saying, was an expert in zoning, is, "You folks aren't making things up, talking to us." You have a zoning ordinance. That is your law. You need to follow that law. Therefore, I would like to read the definitions. And now definitions aren't perfect, you might question, but I see some differences in definitions here as you apply it to this land. The applicant is requesting R1. Reading from the zoning ordinance. The R1 transitional residential district is designed to provide a district for single-family detached dwellings between a rural and urban density. And that goes back, I think, to what Supervisor Olson said about, is this leapfrogging? There is no higher density around this area that the applicant is asking to be R1. R1 in my mind is between, well, it is here, it's between a more dense and a less dense. It's a transition zone. That doesn't apply to this land, in my mind. The then, the AR, agricultural residential district, is designed to provide for single-family detached dwellings with limited activities and related agricultural uses at a rural density. It goes on, and I write it all down, but it goes on to explain the kind of things that you do to make sure that the agricultural and the residential uses are adequately buffered, whatever. So when I'm looking at this personally, in my time on zoning, planning the zoning commission, it seemed to me when we voted on this, that R1 was not appropriate. I did not see it being a transition. I saw this being more of an AR.
Yeah, and.
And that's all I wanted to say, and we have somebody else who wants to talk?
Absolutely. I just wanted to ask a question, and I so appreciate you, you bringing this up. It looks to me like this is being proposed, Linda, as kind of a hybrid, because the true R1, and Jerry, you help me through this, but that's a half-acre density.
Twenty-eight thousand.
Twenty-five, roughly a half acre, right? An acre is forty-eight thousand, Murphy. So a half-acre density. And what I'm hearing being proposed is half-acre lots, which is the reason for the R1 request, but at a density that is much less than a one home per half acre. I mean, no matter how you slice it, whether you slice it by the quarter, quarter, or by the number of developable acres, or the full number of acres, were much less density than what R1 would truly be, right? We're talking about somewhere between fifty-six and eighty-one homes on a hundred and sixty acre site. That's much less than R1, but agricultural residential requires one acre minimum lot size. And what I'm hearing proposed is, we don't want, or the developer doesn't want one acre lot sizes, because it would be cost prohibitive to draw the kind of homeowners that they're looking to draw. And I'm just asking you, so you read the definition of the.
I don't think the zoning ordinance allows you to create or invent a hybrid. The zoning ordinance says what the zoning ordinance says.
Absolutely true. But the zoning ordinance does not require that you, so if you lay the AR on it and you say, or the R1 on it, and you say half-acre sized lots, but it doesn't say how many lots you have to have. In other words, you don't have to fill up the whole property with it, but if you go the AR, your minimum is one acre lot sizes, and that's the problem.
Wait, Lee, I asked Mr. Dodson when he was going to do this property. It sounds like it's going to be either or. How would you like to see this board vote?
Consistent with the zoning ordinance.
You're asking us to deny it?
I'm just asking you to look at the zoning ordinance. I did vote against this, the planning and zoning commission, because I did not feel like R1 was appropriate. I didn't think it fit the definition. But you are making your own decisions here. I think that it needs to be, that decisions need to be based on the zoning ordinance. If we don't base decisions on a zoning ordinance, we don't have a zoning ordinance.
Lady Bree. Thank you. Cindy, I saw you move with the microphone.
Yes, thank you. I would be short. I am a very fanatic and have been for many years. I'm not going to get what I want out of any decision that's possible here today. So I'm looking at the options. And I see an option in the CAFO, which I don't like for that site. I see the option, and they wouldn't have to have any kind of permission to do this, of putting, say, three big expensive houses on there, and if one of them decides that it wants a thirty-five acre lot that turns into a tree farm, and the second one wants mountain bike trails, and the third one wants the biggest moat lawn in the world, there goes the prairie. So of the rock and the hard place that I see, I can't believe I'm saying this, but I would prefer to have the rezoning with all the conditions that were recommended by the planning and zoning, and with further negotiation with the developer to make things as good as possible for the prairie. If I thought things could remain the way they are now, I wouldn't be saying that. But it's pretty clear to me that they won't. And so between the rock and the hard place, I guess I'm picking reluctantly the hard place. Thank you.
Cindy, thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to address this as part of the public hearing for the zoning, rezoning request? Last chance? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, turn to the board for further conversation and options. Board, questions or comments based on what we've heard?
I don't want a confinement operation there. That's, sorry for all of you out there, okay? I do understand Supervisor Sanders' rationale about the half acre as the total of it. I like the fact that there is a park there in land authority and conservation reserve. I appreciate that we're possibly looking at seventy acres instead. Cindy, I hope you get some of your remnant plants. I talked to our naturalist, and I see that our director of conservation is in the back room. I know they're going to try their darndest to keep some of those preserved, but also they have big challenges ahead of them, as we referenced on water, and there's a lot that Mother Nature does, and then people come in and do on top, that can affect that natural prairie, especially if they just remnant. So I'm not really factoring that in. I'm a little bit still in shock that three hundred and fifty thousand is an affordable house, but, you know, man, I buy affordable housing, but I try to work on some really lower than that. My biggest fear is that it, of the leapfrogging actually, that then the next hundred and sixty acres is going to get sold, and then there's going to be some, somebody come in and use this as the example. What I'm willing to consider with the seventy houses down to the seventy, the septic system would have to be a condition for me to vote yes for those areas where you could have one common collection and run your laterals off of that. I am going to reference something that I reminded not to reference in a long time, but I was a journalist for a long time here. So I've covered developments in this county since two thousand and two, and I have seen the development community sometimes really dig in their heels. Kurt Friedrich has not done this. The opposite has happened. Is he's really tried to meet as many goals as he could and still take what is a very unique piece of property with the topography of it. So that's where I'm going to stand. And I can make a motion, or anybody else want to come in?
If we could talk for just a minute?
Sure.
More before you, Marty, anything you want to?
No, I think Cindy Hill, Brenda, if I'm speaking from my mind, has gone on this. I think Mr. Dodson does this out of necessity for his family, and I respect that. I think quite possibly this is a stretch. I understand that this would be a bit of a burden and hardship to the city of Gilbert, which I think Gilbert will grow too. This, the likelihood that they will grow this way. It is, as we're watching them grow to the south, as you're seeing the infill with Urban Brownman and Northern High School, it's a community that is expanding. This is probably a little further than I would like to see it too. Don't disagree. But I think that, yeah, we're looking at the two thousand and eighteen highs. I think we will miss when in fact it will become.
Karen, Emily. Marissa, so I'm going to tell you where I think I am and what I think I heard you say.
Okay.
To see if that's where we are. So I am moving toward approval of the rezoning with conditions as presented, except a mending condition one. And the condition one talks about the whole quarter, quarter. And to me, it was, that's kind of a convoluted reference point. I don't know anywhere the county has referenced density per quarter, quarter before. And so I threw out there the possibility of no more than one developable lot per acre of total developable ground, understanding that there are going to be half-acre lots instead of acre lots, which gives us more, more open space, right? Which is the seventy in reference. And so I'm suggesting that conditions, all the conditions that are here, be what we put forward. But the first condition, which is the overall density of future subdivision, shall be consistent with the density of equal-rich subdivision, not to exceed fourteen developable lots per quarter, quarter. We just changed that to the overall density of the future subdivision shall not be more than one developable lot per total net acres of development.
Oh, net acres.
Thinking that we're taking out, so it's a hundred and sixty total acres, but really what we're interested in is what's developable, which, Kurt, what I'm hearing is about seventy acres. Is that right? So seventy, you agree? And I would, that's where I am. That's what I heard you saying. Marty, I kind of hear you along that direction. I just want to see if we're getting anywhere close, because then we need to reword that one condition.
Yes, we're very, very close. I just really, I'm looking, I saw Margaret James at one point here. Oh, there she is, way back at all. Just to make sure, what's the best way, Margaret, to handle the condition about septic when possible, especially on some of those larger lots? Do you want to put in conditions, or is that something that can be handled during the platting process?
Margaret James, Environmental Health. Couple options out there. One is to have on sites for each and every one. Another one is to have on sites and allow laterals to be in the green space. And the third one is to pipe it so that it all comes down to a lower point in the landscape, and we have one large package plant. And it is charged to the lower area there. The advantage to that third option is that it would take all of that water past that sensitive zone for the plants, and it wouldn't overwater them per se.
I'm not sure I heard Kurt offer that option. What I think I heard Mr. Friedrich offer was force in some locations around some, or where it would direct the water to the remnants, that he would be willing to look at maybe a dual or four, fourplex? I don't, I'm sure that's not the right word, but for those sites. And then the rest would be the single. Is that what I heard?
Marissa, I heard common discharge.
Okay.
Where possible, taking into account that we don't want to overwater some of these drier, up and prairie areas, because the real benefit to conservation, Mike's standing in the back of the room, and Mike, I'm just going to ask you to affirm if I'm saying this correctly. The real potential benefit to conservation is if we can preserve these native plant species, and the reality is, on the higher end, if they get too much water, we're going to lose them anyway.
One thing I really want to add, and I say this in all of the subdivision proposals, is that we are adding a lot of water to that small mini watershed, if you will. It's three hundred gallons to about seven hundred gallons or even more if they're irrigating their lawns per lot. So that's, that's a lot of water being added to that area. That's the problem with the density. If you get the higher density, you're going to get more water.
Thank you, Margaret.
So if the condition added would be to work with our environmental health and planning and zoning department for common collection, common cluster collection system for four to six homes. system for four to six homes as able. That is a condition that I would like to add.
Correct.
Oh, yeah, all right. Common cluster, or cluster, common cluster collection system that would have laterals for four to six, single laterals for four to six homes on collection.
Jerry, go ahead.
Yeah, would you mind just restating the first condition, just so I'm clear?
Yeah, let's, let's talk. Total number of developable lots shall not exceed the total number of developable acres. Right, the intent being that we're taking those ninety, I don't want the fuzzy math, so if we're taking ninety acres out of this thing, the perceived fuzzy math, how about that? We take ninety acres out of this thing, we're really talking about seventy developable acres. So let's just keep it clean. We know that the reason that we wanna move through the R1 is so that they can be half-acre lots, they don't have to be acre lots. But we don't want the density that would be on seventy acres, it'd be a hundred and forty developable lots according to the R1. We don't want that kind of density.
Could, could that be, say, to a maximum of seventy developable acres?
Yeah.
That, that, could you have this? I'm sorry, does this work?
Yeah, absolutely. Anything else? Now we'd be ready for a motion with conditions as stated.
I make a motion that we approve the rezone and the map adjustment. Screen one down. With the conditions as stated today.
Second. Got a motion, a second. Jerry and Emily, are you clear on what we moved and seconded here?
A little bit, clear, thank you.
Okay. Further discussion?
None.
None.
Olson?
Aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. It passes with conditions.
Thank you.
All right.
This will be back before you next week after Harrison Prentice's meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.